Call this meeting to order. If you'll please rise and join Alderman Parker in prayer and pledge.
Thank you Father for this day. We thank you for your mighty blessings and blessings as you have. We ask that you look over and watch us tonight, that we make the right decisions, use a little wisdom, that we support and trust and work for our taxpayer and the city of Long Beach. We ask that you bless the first responders, the military and their families. For it's one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we're going to call this meeting to order. Roll call. Patrick?
Present.
Pete?
Here.
Mikey?
Here.
Timmy?
Here.
Angie?
Here.
And Bernie?
Present.
All right. We have a full quorum tonight. Let's see. Announcement, presentations and proclamations. We have one with the Chamber of Commerce, small business. Ms. Jennifer, I see you're here representing. How are you this evening?
Good.
Good. If you could just introduce yourself and let us know what you have for us, please.
I'm Claire Murray. I'm the Chair for the Chamber of Commerce, Long Beach Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. And we are here to present two of our small business grants to local Long Beach businesses that have applied for them. These grants are paid for using our fundraising efforts such as Touch a Truck, the upcoming Taste of Long Beach. So that is where your money is going when you sponsor events with us. So we would like to call up our first business, Canine Coaching with Chris.
Hey, would you mind speaking into the mic, please, so everybody can hear it?
Thank you. That's okay. Mic check. Make sure that mic's on.
There we go. Now it's on.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. So we're going to give this check to Canine Coaching with Chris. They applied for a, can't think of that, small business grant, thank you, for their canine coaching. And we are going to get a quick photo with them.
Sure. Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you.
Yes.
Congratulations.
And our second, our second small business grant is going to be with Studio E Dance Company.
So why don't they offer to give you free dance classes?
I can stand. I might teach him something. Show that 70's dance.
I can't see you. Flimmed out there. Can you switch this way? There you go. One more. One, two.
Fraser could look over.
I wasn't really good at this. One more. One, two, three. All right. Awesome. Thank you. Congratulations. You're welcome. Yep, I have hangup.
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Congratulations to both these businesses and thank y'all for choosing Long Beach to do business in.
Yes. Thank you again. And again, this is where your sponsorship funds and your attendance goes. So be sure to keep supporting those Long Beach Chamber events. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving along, do we have any amendments to the municipal docket?
I do.
Okay.
Under number 12, derelict properties, I want to add derelict property slash environmental court discussion.
Discussion under 12?
Yes.
I have one for under new business, West Old Pass Road drainage discussion.
New business, we'll do 11. Under new business, West Old Pass Road drainage.
Correct.
We also have an elevator monitoring contract.
Correct.
That'll be new business 12.
New business 12, elevator monitoring contract. And then under engineering, we're going to add C for a change order for Troutman Basin. Is that?
Lift station.
Lift station. All right. Can I get a motion for these four adds?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. Thank you. Let's see. Approve minutes, Mayor and Board of Alderman, July 5th. That's the recessed meeting. And July 11th, 2023, work session for our tax, I mean, our budget.
No move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, Planning and Development Commission, July 13th, 2023, regular meeting.
No move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Approved docket of claims, number 071323.
Motion.
Have a motion?
That's the right number.
071323?
Mine says 071823.
Ours is 13.
Oh, that's the title on the top of that. It should be 13 because it's the date of the.
All right. So correction verifying.
071823, the date of the meeting.
071323. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Under unfinished business, moving on, purchase and sales agreement for Stage Line Mobile Stage Inc. out of Canada. Mr. Attorney?
I've had a couple of discussions with the gentleman from Montreal, Tony, whose last name I can't really pronounce. It'll get a lot of French in it. But he questioned, first of all, why we even had a contract. Most cities don't enter anyone when we discuss the problems with indemnity and Quebec arbitration language and things of that nature. We explained to him that they presented it to us. He has agreed to delete all of the objections and amendments that I requested. I'd hoped to receive that from him today. He indicated that he thought I would. We did not. I would request the board to consider approval of the contract subject to the amendments that have been represented to me and upon receipt, I'll present it to the board for their review. But I anticipate those objectionable paragraphs to be removed by them. They've agreed verbally, just haven't received it.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to approve the execution of the contract once received with the corrections.
And confirmation of the amendments.
Yes, sir. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New business, moving on. Johnson Road Generator, that's under my heading. Had a meeting with Mr. John Wilson, who's here this evening, to speak about the generator that is located there on Johnson Road where we've done the Price Brothers pipe replacement. And John's going to talk to us a little bit about what we're dealing with there. John, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. This generator was originally part of the project, but when we originally bid it, we were a million dollars over what funds we had to spend on it. So we pulled it out of the project. And at the, during that time period when that was all getting started, we had, what storm was that? Ida or?
Zeta.
Zeta. And so it damaged the generator and we had it as a part of our submittal to FEMA to repair. So we took it out of the project and here at the backside of the project, we wanted to use the line of credit we have for the project to go ahead and do the generator with your permission. That was, but the, the bank that we were using for that Hancock refused to do it. So we're looking at another bank to carry that line of credit with your approval. And this is just, you have to front the money to get to the FEMA money. So, and then the FEMA money we would use to pay off the line of credit. Now, this would have to go through your approval here and then go through our board approval with Long Beach's approval at our board also. This is just a mechanism to access the FEMA money, which isn't 100%. It would be, right now, we're getting like 90 and 95% for our returns. But we would start this project and have it hopefully done by next March and then seek the FEMA reimbursement, which we'd notify them, we're doing all this. And so far, we have everything from FEMA that we're going to get paid, so.
And we've been getting reimbursed on, or you guys have been reimbursed on the rest of the projects?
A number of other projects. We've been reimbursed for Zeta and Ida specifically to the tune of about $800,000. We still have some money out there waiting for reimbursement on other things that we've already done the work on. So we're diligently working through our list like everybody else.
Sure. This board's very familiar with dealing with FEMA and reimbursements.
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately.
This generator is just one of our things. We wanted to get this project done. And the line of credit we were using is a million dollar line of credit. We have to pony up the money first and then seek reimbursement through the state on that project. So we're about to finish up on all that and we're waiting for reimbursement on that. We'll close out that line of credit and hopefully do this other line of credit, so.
Motion to approve? Second, with discussion?
Discussion.
Counsel? This is.
Question.
Any problems?
I know John has researched this and what he's telling seems reasonable.
Okay.
There's nothing wrong with it.
And this is basically, if I, sorry to step on your toes, John, is this correct? This is basically what we did with the Price Brothers project as well. What we're doing with this.
Yes.
That's how we financed that project.
Because the, like the Long Beach project with state revolving funds, which is a loan, you have to put up the money first and then seek reimbursement.
Reimbursement.
So for the project, you know, we're talking 7.6 million. We did that in, you know, each pay application, we put together the submittal to DEQ and got that reimbursed back. We're at the end of the job now. That job's been closed out, finalized out. So in, you know, we've got several hundred thousand dollars we're waiting for reimbursement back to us.
Gotcha.
Now trying to get this generator done with FEMA reimbursement is just the last little piece on this project.
If I may, is there any, is there any risk to the city on using the line of credit of not getting the FEMA reimbursement at the same rate as?
Yes, sir, there is. You know.
That's what they needed to know.
You know that there is.
We're familiar with that problem.
And it's my concern, Don, as we know, the news media broadcast last night, that Moss Point, who's been leveled by several tornadoes over there, is not getting FEMA money. So what happens if we front a million dollars and we're not reimbursed?
We're fronting about $100,000.
$100,000.
$100,000.
But it is.
So this was already an approved scope from Zeta? Couple of things. But that doesn't, that doesn't change the fact that, you know, FEMA could pull a rabbit out of their hat and, you know, not pay us. But here's, here's the other, on the flip side of the coin, explaining the whole project here. Pre, pre this repair of all this Price Brothers and this generator, when you drove down Railroad Street and saw those pump trucks out there, you know, that was, that was us on the hook for a break.
$250,000 every time.
And each time this break was, it cost us to the tune of about $250,000.
Yes.
Because of the time, the trucks. And that's just to get sewage from, from Nicholson all the way to the industrial parks. So I understand your point, but also go and look at, look at what we could, could happen again if, if we don't look at this.
Catch 22.
So just kind of giving everybody all the information out there to make this educated decision, so.
I'm guessing if we don't take the match and we didn't replace it and then five years it completely goes out, then we'd be on the hook 100%.
Correct.
It's already gone out.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're doing patchwork right now, trying to just use other mechanisms to make it work. We, we, Utilitro already owns a bypass pump. That's, we can put that out there and use it whenever we need to. But you've got to understand, there's, we've got 52 pump stations and we're adding to that. So that has to be available wherever. So, you know, it just.
Aye.
All right.
This is my best mechanism to get FEMA money to pay for this.
Right.
It's just, you've got to use upfront money to get to that. And there is no guarantee, as Mr. Simpson pointed out.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Thank y'all.
Right. Moving on, item number two, speed limit signs. Alderman Parker?
I talked to Joe and I had mentioned something to him about getting us a number of speed limits and also the cost of, and then putting them up.
Yes, sir. I got that information for you. The cost is going to be 13, excuse me, $1,325. It looks like it's about 35 signs. It'll take, from what time we order, it'll take two weeks to deliver and it'll be a couple of weeks for us to, to, to put them up. We can, we'll probably want to let Courtney inform the public that we're doing this.
Right. That we're changing those speed limits.
You vote on it and I'll, I'll order them and we get them up within a month.
I'll make a motion. We go ahead with it.
I have a motion. And second, I have just a little, where, where does this funding come from?
This is going to come out of just our general fund, our operating, streets operating.
Okay. I just, I, I don't see any problem with it, but I was going to mention, should we wait? Should we do it now or should we wait till the new budget? Just, I'm, okay. That's just a question. So I, I'll strike my statement then. Any more discussion? Seeing none. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on, number three, amended grant agreement with MDA on the Quarles House. This is basically, this is amending the grant for another year. The project is in motion. I encourage anybody in the audience or that's watching on Facebook, if you have the opportunity to drive by, it's on Pass Road, right there, just south of the post office. The house is coming along and it looks really nice, so.
Motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amended grant agreement, MDA downtown revitalization, adding this, this, as you can see, the signs at the foot of Jeff Davis, the, what are we calling? The monuments at Jeff Davis and then at South Nicholson and where are we at? West? Just west of Jeff Davis.
This is just timelines, what we're managing.
Timeline. Yes, sir.
Motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second.
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
Did, Mikey talked about the last meeting. We were going back and seeing if we could get Doc or better.
Next meeting. It should be on the agenda next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more?
The North Jeff Davis, is any of this for North Jeff Davis?
No.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Well, the last one was Quarles House.
No, this is, this is all south.
Okay.
What we're talking about now.
All right.
Yes, this is all south.
All right. So call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. All right. State aid grant agreement, Mississippi Library Commission, health insurance and life insurance. This is our reimbursement that we get from the state on the life and health insurance for the employees.
No move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Engineering selection for CE and I for Klondike Commission Project Pickering Firm. There's a letter in your packet to the, to the Mississippi Department of Transportation. Sorry, I had to get on the same page here. We reviewed three engineering firms and due to Pickering Firm doing the design and being on it, the recommendation is going to the state to renew that.
No move.
I have a motion.
Discussion?
Let me get a second first, please.
Second.
Second. And now your discussion, sir.
I'd like to table this until we have, it doesn't have any prices on here.
This is just to pick the firm.
And the contractor come next.
Right.
Right. I thought we kind of talked about in the past, like bidding these projects out versus just selecting a company. Because if you, I mean, it's kind of put in the part before the horse, if you select a company and then ask the price, right? So shouldn't we get a price before we select the companies?
Sir, one more time?
It would just make sense to me, you would get a price before you just move straight into selecting a company.
Let me stand. Okay. I had a motion and a second and I have an alternative motion to table. Do I have a second on the alternative motion?
I'll second that one.
All right. I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. No.
All right. So need to do a roll call. Patrick?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Mikey?
Aye.
Timmy?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Bernie?
No.
Okay. The ayes have it. So we'll table this to the next meeting where we can get some more information. Moving along, Go Mesa Grant Application Authorization. These are the.
To apply for that?
This is to apply for the Troutman Outfall Basin and outfall improvements that you see along the beach line, correct? David, isn't that what we discussed?
I actually thought this change order was coming in later. Are you talking about the change order that I've put in front of y'all?
No, sir. This is number seven, under Go Mesa.
Sorry. Confusion there.
I just wanted to make sure I'm explaining it correctly. It's the outfalls.
The city has previously applied for that.
Yes, sir.
That Go Mesa and y'all could choose to, to do that again, for sure.
Yep.
Motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right. Number eight, property tax exemption, Rivoli Property LB 112 LLC.
So, once again, the name of the owner's not correct on here according to the Harrison County Land Row. This company does meet the requirements for this abatement. We have done it to Parrish's Building, we have done it to Bull's Building, and we've also done it to the Crawfish Hut Building in years. That's been years ago.
I didn't realize that Crawfish Hut was on there as well.
And that's probably 10 to 12 years ago.
This is, this abatement's been on the books since 2011.
Okay.
It came up in 2010 and it was approved in 2011 to revitalize. It started off as Highway 90 and Jeff Davis.
Don, I think that's even been updated in 2018 was the latest.
Yeah, it's been updated, excuse me, but I just, going back to the original, since it's been on the books.
I just don't think we can vote on it tonight with this being the, because of Harrison County Land Row until we get a deed of trust showing that the, that the property has been.
Conveyed?
Conveyed. The Harrison County Land Row says one thing and this says another thing, so.
And also, and if you read the ordinance, it says, it does state in the ordinance, it says, within 12 months of completion and then no later than 12 months after completion.
Correct.
Also, so.
Let's see here, on the 12 months would be, you said completion, February 2025. Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the ordinance, the way the ordinance reads, is $500,000 improvement?
$2 million in this section, in this area.
This is high density?
C1 HD is $2 million.
Okay, $2 million. And this is showing $2.4 to $3 million project.
As a start.
Have we got all our answers on, on that contract as far as the taxes and everything that's, they're asking for? I know the school tax and property taxes has got to be paid, but what about the sales tax?
Well, what we have in, what we have in front of us is property.
All right.
And just another, a question I have, maybe for Mr. Simpson, is it says on your true cash value is how it's estimated the final cost is at?
So that would be assessed, right?
That would be the tax assessor's assessment. He'll do a cash value assessment.
Once a project is completed.
Yep, yes.
Well, the, the threshold, as far as.
The developer does, does an estimate with, with his application, with his permit application.
Correct. But I think, Patrick, are you asking as far as the cash, as far as threshold for qualifying?
No, well, if you look at like the, one of the last things that, you know, it lists like the city's responsibility, residents' responsibility if they were doing the residential and then it says at the top, you know, it's a $2 million investment amount. But if you look at the bottom of the ordinance, it does state that like you get, whoever, the applicant has to prove true cash value.
Sure. So meaning that they have to prove that investment.
Right. That's what I'm asking. I didn't know if that was a.
You have to, you have to prove, you have to prove you made, you made the threshold to qualify.
Right. I didn't know if that was like, do they show financial statements or do they get the true cash value from the tax assessor's office?
We've always made them provide documentation that I review and give to y'all.
So it goes through our comptroller's office?
The developer provides the documentation.
On the three prior ones, yes, sir.
And just to, you know, I know there's been some, just to explain, like, we hold the money, so they would pay, they would pay the taxes, we hold the money, and then it would, there's a third party, I think, in this case, would be self.
Nope, you're confusing that one, that's the sales tax. This is property, this is property.
Right, right.
Yep, and so, and that's, the county taxes are still included, the school taxes are still included.
Right.
It's just the city, okay?
So my question to you is, would it be proper protocol for me to offer continual input here with regard to that?
Without a doubt, that's, it's your prerogative, sir.
Here's, here's my position on that, okay? First and foremost, this board, me personally and the rest of this board, took a bullet for this developer with a lot of citizens in this town, okay? Secondly, I was in a meeting with Sarah Rankin with several of you here on the board, and it was represented to me at that point in time through Sarah that when the development was going on in Pascagoula, when the foundation crew was finished in Pascagoula, they would head westbound, and they would start the foundation over here. Then, when the framing crew was finished in Pascagoula, the framing crew would come over here, and then, and the carpenters, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and that didn't happen. I feel like that was a misrepresentation. A shovel hasn't even been turned over here. That's a red flag, in my opinion. Pascagoula, I understand, may have offered this firm, this company, a tax abatement. Pascagoula is not situated similarly to Long Beach, they have Chevron, they have Ingalls. We are nowhere near in the same situation as Pascagoula is, and in my opinion, can't afford to give such privileges away. A week ago, this board met in a budget hearing and struggled at that point in time to try to figure out ways to pay our first responders for retention and to keep them here, and nobody from this firm was here, so evidently, they don't feel it's a critical enough issue to figure out how we adequately pay our first responders, and don't know if they have a genuine concept of the financial struggle that this city goes through, year after year. Initially, it was presented that the development was supposed to be between three and five million. I'll see the paperwork here, it's what, up to three million? I'm confused, again, a red flag. It doesn't seem consistent with what their plans are, and I haven't seen anything. Though I'm not here every day, I haven't seen anything in writing that constitutes exactly where they intend to go with this. So I'd ask what their intention is. I would also remind this board that we do own the leverage. Yes, we need new businesses in this town, but they need us, just like we need them, okay? We are the last frontier. They're not going to Gulfport, they're not going to Ocean Springs because the competition is too fierce over there. They're not going to Bay St. Louis because downtown is already filled up, Past Christian's filled up. We are the last entity that has space for entrepreneurs to come in here, and they're gonna make money, or else they wouldn't even entertain the thought of coming to Long Beach. That's my opinion. I also wanted to remind everybody that this future is bright for entrepreneurs who take an interest in coming to Long Beach, yet they were building a Nissan plant, and they were gonna employ four or 500 employees and deposit millions into the coffers in Long Beach. Yeah, we could talk about a tax abatement, but personally, I'm not willing to take another bullet. Personally, and I don't think this board should do it, but whatever the pleasure is, in order to provide a tax abatement to somebody who's provided such inconsistency to us, and that's my input.
I'd like to make a motion, we table this till we get all the proper documentation, then it can come to a vote.
Second.
Have a motion and two seconds. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
At that same time, maybe we can get a timeline from them.
Got it. I'll reach out. All right, let's see. Number nine, award construction manager advisor, Andercorp. I believe we put this out for bid, and...
We received one response.
We received one response, which was Andercorp, who we are currently working with on the harbor. This will, this will help us alleviate work with David and help with our bids and construction process on further projects.
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, resignation public defender, Ed Edwards.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Chief, do we know the situation? I'm sorry.
Public defender, that's court.
That's court, sir.
I'm sorry, Ms. Emma?
Ms. Emma?
I didn't see you sitting back there, got to sit up now.
She's hiding.
He's just gonna go, he didn't want to do it anymore.
Okay, okay, so wasn't anything about money or anything like that? Okay, all right.
Do you have anybody interested in it?
We actually just have another one that just got appointed a few weeks ago. He may be taken both times, so we're still working on it, we'll know more probably within a week or two.
All right.
You don't want to give a name, Emma?
Mr. Little.
All right. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, Mr. McCaffrey, West Old Pass Drainage.
Yes, we have a little section of storm drain flowing down West Old Pass Road that utility partners have dealt with the years, constantly having to go out and repair it over and over again. And I'd like for Joe and David to get together and bring us back some ideas, whether we find a better way to patch them or replace, relocate the lines, whatever has to be done. Just come back with some ideas so we can look at.
How much is it, Timmy? Foot, feet-wise, city block?
Yes.
Yeah?
It's a weird lot, it jogs so many times in a small little area, and it just constantly causes issues.
Is this the one in the front yard?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we need a motion, or just a...
Yeah, I would prefer...
I'd like to, for...
I'd prefer a motion.
David and Joe to take a look at it and bring us back, so...
Second.
Have a motion and a second, Angie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Number 12, under new business, elevator contract. We added this, the, the harbor master's office has an elevator, and of course, they have to be signed off by the state and inspected by the state. And correct me if I speak out of turn here. Harry had the fire alarm people down there installing the fire alarm, and we had to go ahead and sign this contract for alarm monitoring for it, so have the pleasure of the board.
I got an email that says, and I'm asking for formality, that we have to suspend the rules in order to do this?
We did at the beginning.
We did, at the very, when we suspended them when we added it to the docket.
And this is, this is required by the state that we have a notification system inside the elevator. This is not required by the harbor, this is required by the state for everybody that's wanting to know, so...
This code, and it, it makes the harbor building ADA compliant also.
Got it. All right.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
On that one early.
Dumping the gun there, sir. All right. Departmental business under mayor's office. I have two things, and first one involves a phone call that I had with David Ball earlier today. There's a sinkhole on Alexander Road where we just had some, this Price Brothers...
Allen Road.
Allen Road, excuse me.
Next to the middle school.
Why don't you, why don't you go ahead and speak to it, because I'm gonna screw it all up, and they're gonna have a million questions.
Yeah, there's a, on that project there, there's a, there's a sinkhole that's developing in the asphalt there, and we're working with the contractor to have them come out and, and address it. They're concerned that it's not a warranty item, that it might be some other sort of work in the area that they may not be their responsibility, and they're just wanting, if it's not their responsibility, they're not saying it's not, they're just concerned, if it's not their responsibility, could we use our minor services contract that we have standing with them? It's, it's the contractor J.L.B., we have that contract already that we bid two years ago or a year ago to make those repairs, if it's not their responsibility.
Are you gonna be on site to make sure it is?
I think, I think that the utility authority will be there. Joe will be there, we'll have somebody from Overstreet there. I'm guessing they're gonna be doing that at the end of this week, I'm not gonna be in town, so...
I just think somebody should be there.
Somebody's gonna be there.
We'll have a city representative there.
A city representative.
Yes, somebody will be there to observe.
For the sheer fact of having to get it on the books and get it done, I, I told David to reach out to them and tell them that we were gonna discuss it tonight so that they could plan on having it on their agenda.
I'll make a motion that if it is the city's responsibility to fix, that we use our contractor to repair.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. If there's any changes, I will tell you this, I'll, if you guys will let me know, and we'll send an email out to the board, if that's okay with the board. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. One other item I wanted to bring up is, we got some news, and it's been on the news carried by your major outlets, or your local outlets, excuse me, WLOX, WXXV, and Sun Herald, the increase to the garbage collection. Gulfport is separate from Harrison County, but Harrison County got theirs, which it trickles down to us. And our increase over last contract is a year, right? $669,000 of an increase. So, just kind of FYI, the city is dealing with a deficit there, and we are looking at all options to rectify this. More to come. With that, that's all I have under the mayor's heading. Moving on. Personnel, police department, I have two resignations.
Come in.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Thirteen down?
Eleven, it's, they've already turned them before.
It's just, this is official now?
Right.
Okay. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City clerk, revenue expense report, June of 2023.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Budget amendment FY 2023 for the fire department.
Come in.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? This is moving the $2,500 of grant money that was awarded to the fire department over to their budget, and $175 for the CPR car, us... I'm sorry. The CPR cards. All right, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving along, fire department. Any updates, sir?
I think y'all are aware that the baby box is in. They finished the alarm part of it today, so it, we'll start testing it, and it won't be long before it'll be in operation.
Good.
Good deal. That's all Ms. Kaitlin Kelly today, and I congratulated her again for the, the hard work that she did raising the funds for this.
She needs to be recognized, but we'll deal with that later.
Yes, sir.
Is it, I've seen the outside but not the inside, is the inside aesthetically pleasing?
It is. It actually was the correct depth, that, that outer wall on that end of the building was almost two feet in depth, and it, it fell out about an inch inside the wall, or further in the wall, and they're just gonna run a piece of trim around it.
Trim it, good deal.
Be okay.
All right. Is that all you got, sir?
That's it.
Thank you. Police department.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it, sir. Engineering, under A, contract for North Jeff Davis Extension, bottom to top construction.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, come in.
If you would like.
Yeah, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, roll call. Patrick?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Mikey?
Aye.
Timmy?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
And Bernie?
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. Moving along, contract Edmund subdivision water system improvement, Overstreet and Associates. David brought this to us in the past. David, is it the, is it all of Edmund Drive or just the circle at the north end?
It's the full length of Edmund Drive from, from Railroad to Old Pass, and Edmund Circle will all be included in this project.
And if I'm correct, my memory serves me, undersized piping?
And I think there's transite, it's been a maintenance problem for the city, so it's kind of a fire flow, water quality kind of issue, and, and...
But no funding there yet for it?
Funding is through ARPA and MICWE.
Got it, so this is one of our projects.
This is one of the projects that you guys have selected.
I knew I was, all right, perfect. Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Under C is the amendment, your letter here that David handed out at the beginning, the Troutman Water Basin improvements, we have an amendment. With my discussion with David, it was discovered in the intersection? Why don't you explain? I'm sorry.
Happily. We knew there was a water main that was in the way of our proposed pump station, so we included a, an item of work to modify that and reroute it around the pump station, but when we got there, we found there's a lot more than just one water main in the way. There's several water mains, and, and they're going on several weeks now trying to work through with Public Works to figure out how, first, where all the mains are at, which has been a struggle so far, and can we even turn them off so that we can work on them? So I think that's been found that the valves don't exist or are non-functional, and really, our, the, the major chunk of this change order is to deal with relocating the water lines that are all in the way of that pump station that's gonna be built there at that intersection. There is one other major chunk, which is, we found some, what we believe to be closed, you know, abandoned fuel tanks right there south of 104 West Railroad, which I think is the RE/MAX Realtor, and so, and they're definitely in the way, it's not really a good way around them, so I think we're proposing to directionally drill our new force main under them and just leave them there. They appear to be abandoned, you know, filled with concrete, so we think the appropriate steps probably have been taken with DEQ, and we just want to go that direction.
Where's the gas tanks for the Texaco Station located?
I'm not sure, the Texaco is the existing one, the south?
Yeah, it's on the south side.
I think they're on this, we've not encountered those, or a lot that we know of, they should be on the south side.
We don't have to go down any further, but those tanks wouldn't be the ones you're talking about, though, right?
No, sir, these are, these are right there next to North Jeff Davis.
This is where Bill's American used to be, right down in that area.
Right. An old, an old, an old fueling station that, that I don't think has been in service even in my lifetime.
There's a Adams garage there too, for a while.
So there's some, some substantial costs associated with this, but if we're going to finish this project, this is what it's gonna take.
Thank you, Mr. Torp.
And...
Go ahead, go ahead, Dave.
I was gonna offer, the only thing that we, we specifically had this conversation with DEQ today, I haven't got it in my letter, I think it probably needs to be part of the minutes, is that DEQ is saying, you guys need to approve this change order regardless of whether DEQ is gonna participate in the funding of it. And, and just so you know, just as a quick reminder, we're already $200,000 more than DEQ funding on the project anyways. You guys knew that months ago when we awarded it, that you were gonna have to come up with your, some of your own money for it. We're still hoping DEQ is gonna come through and provide some additional funding, but regardless of whether they do or not, this change order needs to be approved on that basis.
And I'll add one other thing, part of our discussion, part of David and I's discussion was making sure if water is cut off in that area, that the businesses will be contacted ahead of time. We just need to stay ahead of that, we've done a very good job so far with this project in communicating with the surrounding businesses, and we just need to keep it up, so... All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public Works, Joe, you wanna talk to us about the rebidding of this asphalt, sir?
Yes, sir. You know, they had a price change to us, and the board elected not to, to take that price change and to... I would understand, I took the understanding that y'all wanted to rebid it. We're probably not six weeks away from having to do our annual bids as well. I suggest to the board to just go ahead and hold off, and let's do this bid process in September. We normally do it, we're not gonna have but a couple more weeks. When you advertise for 30 days and do it all. If something comes arise and we need to have paving right away, we can take quotes. It's not gonna hinder us, it's not gonna hurt us, so I just, I would like the board to recommend it.
Just one other, I have a motion and a second, little bit more discussion, because I know it's gonna come up from Alderman Brown. We talked about it, as far as paving roads, how we did that.
We were gonna do it under our annual contract with... So the paving project that we have...
You've been on us about paving for a long time, right?
The paving contract, so this is gonna delay the paving contracts for about six weeks as well. If we, the only other alternative we could do is, is to bid it all out with David, but you still gotta go through the bid process, and you're not gonna have anybody boots on the ground six more weeks, a month and a half is, it's also gonna delay.
I wanted to address that part for you, sir.
Mr. Frazier.
You're welcome.
Also have a couple more items to kind of bring up to y'all, if y'all, if y'all don't mind, under my heading.
Well, wait, do we need a vote on this first?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion and a second already. Any more... Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries, now you can go, sir.
Sure. There was a blinking red caution light at rural in Pineville, this came to our attention that it's been down for some time, I think it's been down for many, many months. We've had no complaints on it, we did finally get somebody that asked about it. To save money, it's kinda my recommendation to probably go ahead and leave this light off, to go ahead and just abandon it and pull the meter and save the city the money. I think years ago, it was probably needed when it was rural and no lights and a lot of more traffic was coming down Pineville and didn't know rural was there. It's up to the board, it's a pleasure to the board, I think it's, it needs to be voted on and then we can move forward.
Pete?
I think... Make that motion to abandon it.
And I think what it is, they backed up the school zone also past that intersection, so that slows people...
Past that, yes.
Right. It was before there, right, chief? And now they backed it up to the west more, so it does slow people down a little bit more, so.
A motion.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries to remove that, what's left of the blinking light. Next, sir?
I went to a Long Beach Water Management District's meeting this past week, just for y'all information, Canal One project that they've been working on sometime, that's that widening of Canal One, they've been trying to cure all those easements, I think all that's finally done, and I think it's gonna bid August 18th. So you may start seeing some cars around there, I'll actually get with Courtney to let them know when all that's bid, who has it, and kinda when that construction will start. It's gonna help us out a lot, I just wanted you to know some good news, that this thing's coming to life.
It's starting at Klondike, the canal bridge.
This is gonna start at...
Headed west.
Yes, I believe so, I think it's actually gonna go always to Commission.
Okay.
I think all the way to the lot behind the Gaddy's Lot.
It was, starting right across...
Start from Gaddy's Lot north of Commission and go all the way past to Beet Line, I believe, I haven't seen, actually past Beet Line just a little bit.
When'd you say it was gonna start, hopefully?
August.
Well, you bid, it bids in August 18th, you got, you know, the bid process, and then so you're looking at November before they're awarding anything, so you're talking about the first of the year before you actually get construction on the ground probably. But it's coming to life, it was a long shot for, seemed for a long time, but this is great news for our drainage system.
That's good, so that's, that's the project for Canal One?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you. All right, any more?
No, sir, I appreciate y'all.
Awesome, thank you, sir. Recreation, Mr. Paul is not here, building office, Mr. Dunlop?
Good.
You're good, all right. Harbor, Harry, David?
Good.
All right, thank you, sir. Community affairs, mayor youth council, Courtney, you're up.
The application for the 2023-2024 mayor's youth council will be live tonight, the applications will be due in August 17th, I believe, and I've already gotten with Dr. Locke, the schools, okay with it, I've gotten with Donald and the mayor, but I just wanted to let everyone know that that will start in August.
So for the ones that may not remember, we had a high school, right?
Mm-hmm, it's 11th and 12th graders.
11th and 12th grade, we have a youth mayor's council that's sponsored through the school and the city, and Courtney asked if she could bring this back, and I said, if she had the time and the willingness to do it, I would love to have it, so. Do we need a vote on it? No, we're good, so, thank you. Anything else?
Nope, we're good.
Awesome, thank you very much. All right, moving on, number 12, Darrell Lake Properties, discussion Alderman Brown.
So each year we have all these properties, it's overgrown, and it's the same people, same houses, same addresses over and over, we send them a letter, and three months' time they go out there and they cut their grass, and then in three months' time, we have to send another letter, and this is a revolving door. And council, we have a environmental court now, and I would like to kinda get an update on our building department, what they need to do, how many times do we have to chase this down the street before we can send them to court?
As you know, Alderman Brown, the one, once a property is adjudicated as a menace or nuisance, the city can go and clean up and assess the property owner, they have the right of reentry over the period of a year for up to six times, I think, within a 12-month period, and 12 times over 24 months, and they can charge them up, they need, the city can find them and assess them the actual cost of the cleanup on each occasion. Recently, the legislature helped cities by allowing environmental courts and municipal courts, the municipal court judge and prosecutor to also bring people in on a citation for violations from the building officer to face criminal penalty. And those, quite frankly, in my opinion, seem to have more bite to the bark than us continuing to go back every six months and doing the notice or reentering the property. We're gonna talk in executive session about some ongoing matters in the city and some litigation matters, which cover that same topic here in just a few minutes.
So, and I'll use one example, we have one on Pecan Drive, and it's a mortgage company, so there was a letter sent three months ago, they went in there and cleaned it up, and now it's back, so do we have to send another letter, or can we go ahead and adjudicate it? This is what, this is...
Well, if you've adjudicated them once, you can go back anytime within one year.
No, we have not, we have not cleaned it up. We sent them a letter. They're out of California, am I correct?
Yeah, look, I'll tell you, this mortgage company has bought this property, they're settled around town they own, and they bought it through tax sales or whatever, now we send them a letter, they clean it up, and then they just drop it. And so now, three months later, we're having to go through the same process again and send them a letter, they've never come, we've never brought them to environmental court or anything, they clean it up, but we have to keep doing it, every three months, we get a complaint, we gotta go back at it again, and that takes probably 45 days to get a result. And it's time, and they're out of state, it's not like I can knock on the door.
That's, and that's the problem with both environmental court and our notices, when you have out-of-state peoples getting jurisdiction over them, how are you gonna cite for the environmental court or even the municipal court, someone out of state to come to court and face a criminal penalty? The good part about that is what that new legislation, as I understand, does is every day that they don't clean it up, it's a continuing fine and violation, the municipal court judge or the environmental judge has the right to continue to levy fines for each day that it doesn't go remedied. So there's a real incentive and some teeth in that one to make people clean it up, but it is an issue, getting jurisdiction and process over people who are out of state. We'll have to talk about that some more, Mike and I, and see what best means.
I would like that, because we also have some people, residents, that it's the same houses, the same people, every year after year, and you do a three-month, and then three months later, we gotta write it again, and it's 45 days, and three months later until the winter time.
Could we maybe change something in the ordinance that says we can adjudicate it after the second time that you've been, we've had to send out a notification, would that be something we would have to change the ordinance for?
You'd still have to do all the statutory notice and a hearing and the same things you're doing now, you'd do it, admitting really way to shortcut that due process requirement.
Could you and Mike maybe get on the same page and...
And if he'll join us when we go in that executive session shortly, he can contribute to a discussion we had early this week, too.
Okay.
We need to get Mike a ticket book?
Just don't give him a gun, chief, don't give him a gun.
All right. Are you done, sir?
I am done.
All right.
For tonight.
For tonight, okay. Promise us. All right, moving along, a report from our city attorney, looks like we have three issues that...
I'd request the board consider going to executive session, all three relate to potential litigation matters, which we need to discuss.
Okay.
A motion?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, all right.